... City of Glen Rose City Council to order at 5:30 on May 9, 2016. I ask everyone to please rise for the invitation to be delivered tonight by Councilman Dennis Moore, pastor of Great Baptist Church.
Let's pray. Lord, we are grateful for the blessings you give in the United States of America within our great country. Lord, we're thankful for the great state of Texas, all the blessings you give in our great state. Father, we're thankful for the city of Glen Rose and what a blessing it is to live in this community and the great people that live here. Lord, you've poured so many blessings out upon us as a town. Father, we ask you to bless all these proceedings, all the councilmen, and all the folks here in the meeting tonight. Thank you, Jesus, for this opportunity. Amen.
Please remain standing. The pledges of allegiance will be led by Councilman Chris Bryant.
(Choir singing) Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I'll now call the roll. Councilman Jones.
Present.
Councilman Bryant.
Present.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Ramsey.
Here.
Councilman Martin.
Absent.
We have a quorum. Moving to item two on the agenda is for presentations and proclamations. The first presentation that we have this evening is for the upcoming Texas Heroes Remembered Educational Event, and in that I would like to invite Celeste Schmidt, aka Juana "Havasus" Bernard, to the podium, to please tell us what's on your mind.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmen, Councilwomen, thank you for this opportunity tonight to speak to all of you. I am part of the Texas Heroes Foundation. It was a foundation that was put together about four years ago for the sole purpose of educating our youth about Texas history. We don't want to lose our Texas history, and as you know, I'm a little Texas proud, as you've seen all those flags flying on the square and at Heritage Park. But on May 20th, we are going to have a wonderful event here in Glen Rose. It's going to be at Heritage Park. We'll have additional parking at Oakdale with shuttle, free shuttle service to the park. There will not be any parking inside that little square inside the park because that's for schoolchildren, people from the nursing home, people who are handicapped, so that they can be dropped off and the van can safely turn around and go park. So I wanted to let you all know, there will be signs about parking. So what is the Texas Heroes Remembered about? Well, I'll be very honest with you. It started off with a few, with about seven speakers for our seventh grade class, and it's grown into this 150 people who will be attending and have offered their services because they believe Texas history is as important as I do. We have several different components. Our first component is we have our Texas heroes. One of our Texas heroes is on your council right now. Would you stand up, please? This is Alexander Somerville.[236.43][236.43](Applause). Also, Dennis, would you like to tell them your character?
It's supposed to be John St. Helens.
And so, I just want to tell you, first of all.
I'll try.
I'm working with the group from Grandberry, and they are so totally shocked at the support I've gotten from Glen Rose. They are totally blown away. The day we put up flags, 16, 17 individuals showed up to help put up the flags, and I really appreciate it. I just kept thinking about that and crying because it was just so sweet. We have four components of this. The first one is our Texas heroes. They are reenactors. They are reenactors from all over Texas. We have, I put a list on your, there's a list. We have Travis, San Houston, Dr. Schmidt will be San Houston, David Crockett, Elizabeth Crockett, who's actually a descendant of the Crockett family, James Booey, Susanna Dickinson, Cynthia Ann Parker, Yellow Rose, Green DeWitt, if y'all don't know the story of Green DeWitt, it's quite interesting, Juan Seguin, who'll come in full-blown on horseback, and James Bond, Stephen F. Austin, Alexander Somerville. We also have a very special component. It's our Glen Rose heroes. It's the people in our town who are celebrating and honoring their heritage or the heritage of some other family member in this town, and they're going to be representing the characters in the 1800s of Glen Rose. We're very excited to have them. The other components are demonstrations and exhibits. We have people coming in who are talking about the wagon train. I searched out someone for that because I think our kids so often take for granted all the things they have. And this will give them an opportunity to see how people really live and how hard they worked for the land we live on today. I have, I'll just give you a couple of the demos. We have one gentleman who reenacts the Survivor of the San Francisco Battle. We have a demonstration where they come in and they set up a tent. They'll actually be camping at Heritage Park for that one night, or two nights, and they set up a tent in the 1800s and they teach spinning and how clothing is made. They'll teach them how to spin from the raw materials into cloth, and the husband does saloon. We have another one, the wagon train one, I'm in love with these two little people. When I meet them for that first time, it's going to be very exciting. They're coming, and the gentleman talks about what it took to get ready to come to Texas, and talks about all the things the kids had to give up and the families and what sacrifices and how much things would cost and what they could take. The woman talks about, Ingrid talks about the clothing they wore and why they wore particular clothing, and I think you'll find that segment very interesting. And afterwards, they're going to make rag dolls with the little kids. The boys are going to make ninja dolls, the girls are going to make little rag dolls, but that was sometimes the only thing they could take with them on the wagon train. So, I mean, that is just not even, we have native plants, native animals, we have collections, we have an antique doll collection, we have, I have a list of the programs that are going to be available, that will be rotating. We have people from all over Texas coming to make our Texas Heroes Day really great. I want to invite all of you to participate, come down to the park. There will be, it's from 9 to 7, and I know it's weird hours and everyone goes, why is it on Friday? My whole idea is about, as you know, Texas Heroes is about education, and I wanted to make sure that all children could come to the event. And that required the teachers bringing them. So, the teachers will be coming, we're inviting you, we extended it to 7 o'clock, and I hope to see you all there, wear something comfortable, but wear your western, and get in the mood for Texas. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.[501.12][501.12](Applause). I have watched Celeste as she has put this together. There will be flyers and more information coming out here very shortly, but please, it's going to be so exciting and so much fun. So, spread the word, come on down and have a good time. Celeste's done a phenomenal job of putting this together. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation for National Mental Health Awareness Month. Could I have that representative, please, come forward? Okay.
(Inaudible)
Whereas National Mental Health Awareness Month is part of a nationwide effort to reduce the stigma and discrimination surrounding mental health challenges, to increase awareness of the tools and the resources to prevent such challenges and reduce symptoms, and whereas one in four American families have a relative who has a mental illness such as major depression, anxiety, bipolar disorder, or schizophrenia, and whereas families from all walks of life are affected regardless of their age, race, income, religion, or education, and whereas it is the goal of the Comanche Peak Collaboration for Mental Health to promote education for the residents of Glen Rose, Texas about mental illness and to support our community members. Our goal is to reduce suicide, incarceration, substance abuse, and other harmful consequences associated with undiagnosed mental illness, and eliminate the stigma that too often prevents an individual and families from seeking much-needed mental health care. I, Ande M. Moody, Mayor of the City of Glen Rose, do hereby proclaim May 2016 as National Mental Health Awareness Month, thereby encouraging citizens of Glen Rose, Texas, to better educate themselves about mental illness, to undergo mental health and depression screenings, and if necessary, seek treatment for yourselves and for your families. Okay? So, Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2016, in the city of Glen Rose, Texas.[641.54][641.54](Applause). And my signature.[643.54][643.54](Applause). Are you? Okay. And there's somebody from Pecan Valley. There she is.
There you are. Come on in. Come on in, girls. Come on in.
You want to say something?
Please, come on in if you'd like to say something. By all means.
I would like to say, on behalf of Pecan Valley and the paving way program, we work with youth and young adults with mental health concerns, and I would just like to say thank you for making this a priority in our community. There are lots of kids and young adults with mental health concerns, and there's a lot of stigma out there associated with it. So, if we can eliminate the stigma and just accept these youth and young adults where they're at and help them have a very productive future. So, thank you.
You're welcome.[696.79][696.79](Applause).
And I might say that I am appointed by the Commissioner's Court to be the Sogwalt County Representative to the Pecan Valley Center's Board, and so I represent Sogwalt County there, and I'm proud to do so.[715.01][715.01](Applause).
And the next proclamation is for motorcycle riding awareness. If I connect the motorcycle board, please come forward. Okay, and, okay. We're ready? All right. Whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of recreation and transportation for thousands of people across the state and the nation, and whereas motorcycles are an economic means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption and road wear, it contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion, and whereas state and motorcycle organizations across this country will be conducting a variety of activities to promote the importance of motorist awareness while sharing the road with motorcycles, and whereas the city of Glen Rose enjoys a large population of motorcycle tourists throughout the year, and whereas we wish to join in this public safety campaign to ensure the safety of our friends by encouraging all citizens to be aware of motorcycles on the streets and the highways. I, Ande Moody, Mayor of the City of Glen Rose, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2016 as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. And who's going to be the recipient?[804.82][804.82](Applause). Would you care to say a few words?
Yes.
Please.
As motorcyclists, we realize that we are small and sometimes hard to see. All we ask you is to remember, look twice, save lives, save lives, look twice. Thank you.[829.38][829.38](Applause).
And please, believe, do not text and drive.
(Applause). Moving on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, the only item on the consent agenda this evening is approval of the minutes of the meeting of April 12, 2016. Do I have, are there any corrections to the minutes from the council members? Councilman Moore?
It may have already been corrected. On item K, it says the motion was seconded by Councilman, Councilman Moore. It may have already been corrected. Okay.
Item K, he doesn't have the...
The motion was seconded by Councilman.
Yeah.
It was seconded by Chris Bryant.
Well, who made the motion? It says that he moved to, he made the motion?
Councilman Bryant moved to approve.
Mike Jones made the motion on 6K. Mike Jones made the motion, M.J., and seconded by CB.
I missed that one, sorry, City Secretary. Okay, and Councilwoman Ramsey?
Yes. Looking under 6J, knowing the issues that we've had in the past about understanding minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
I would prefer that we have city administrator presented to the council instead of the CA, because people in the future may not know who the CA is. There's actually two places in that area.
Okay, are there any other corrections from the council to the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the meetings of the minute of April 12, 2016 with the corrections as noted? I have a motion from Councilwoman Ramsey. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Bryant?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ramsey?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion is passed. Moving on to citizen visitor comments. The city council is always pleased to have citizens attend its meetings, and we welcome your comments. There are a few important points that citizens and visitors need to please keep in mind. At the beginning of the meeting, citizens and visitors are given an opportunity to comment on topics that are not on the agenda, excuse me, for the current meeting. During the meeting, after the council has discussed the issue but before a vote is taken, the citizens will again be given an opportunity to comment on the specific item on the agenda. In either case, citizens wanting to comment must wait to be recognized by the mayor, and after being recognized, come to the podium and state your full name and address. With exceptions, each citizen will have three minutes to speak. All comments are addressed to the mayor, not to individual council members. We, the council, are governed by the Texas Open Meetings Act. This means that we cannot discuss, answer questions, or vote on any item that is not on the agenda for the current meeting. The mayor can only respond to your comments with specific factual information or existing policy. Please remember that negative, inflammatory, or disparaging remarks will not be tolerated. I request at this time that everyone in the council chambers ensure that your phones are turned off or set to vibrate. I also advise council that they are not to text or browse on their cell phones or similar type devices during the meeting. All right? At this time, I have for open visitor comments, non-agenda, Kelly Nobles.
Kelly Nobles, Glen Rose CDB. I just wanted to get up and thank Councilman Bryant, although we've butted heads many times in the last three years and had our issues, the good thing about our relationships is that we've always been able to agree to disagree. And for those who don't know it, Chris was a very big part in me considering taking the CDB position, which I now have. He spoke to me for a couple of hours trying to talk me into doing it and stuff, and so I just want to thank him for that and thank you for being able to agree to disagree when we had our comments, and thank you for all of your support.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Senator Ramsey?
My name is Sandra Ramsey. I live at 104 Apache Court in Glen Rose, and this is a bittersweet meeting for me. When I started out in 2011, Chris was not on council, Johnny was, and we were opposite ends of the pole, and through the years, Chris has become like a son, and Johnny has become a friend. We disagree, as many of you know that have been in council meetings, how many times we have bumped heads, but over the years, we have worked, worked hard that when we leave this meeting, that we're all friends, and I look forward to our new board coming in and that we, as Kelly said, agree to disagree. But Chris, you will be missed, and Johnny will be missed, and so I just want to tell you how much I appreciate both your service and what you've contributed to us.
Thank you, Senator. Very much.
Mr. Rory, I have one question for you. Did you intend to address an agenda item, or is it...
No, I didn't want to talk.
Okay, then I'll just, and is that the same for you, Ms. Rory? Okay, then at that time, at this time, Mr. Rory?
My name is Joe Rory. I reside at 1019 Northeast Bernard, Oakdale Park, 10-6 September 2014. We have got to know a lot of, most everybody in this world I know and enjoy. We've bought in to work here at the park. For you people that live in Glen Rose, you have not taken advantage of our park. You're missing out on a lot of things here. This last weekend, we were so packed with people from Dos Muertos, they were camping and dry camping. I think we had 50 people in camping spots, and for you that don't know, we have 104 RB parks, we've got spots in this park, plus the different housing. Kelly was a past manager of it, I guess last October, I'm not sure, it's on my mind at the time. We have a new manager now. I hope that you come forward and try to back him in any way you can. I have worked for Kelly and I've worked for him both. Both of them are good people, people. This man, if you would give him a chance, he is a super man. His safety's number one, and his employees' number two. But the city of Glen Rose is going to have to back him with a little bit of more money to help keep the standard up as we had it in the past. The employees that's working for this man now love him. I'll be leaving in June. I hate to leave it. I hope you come back and visit. Our boy graduated high school here. You notice I wore a shirt today for you people in Glen Rose, you can see it. Our boy played on the golf team here and took the state the first time in their history. I think won third place in it. Appreciate county for bringing him in. He worked as a lifeguard this last year. He's working for the city, I mean for the county now. No, I take it back, it's a free time. He's going to work for Glen Lakes as a counselor at all. He's got a full scholarship to Hardin Simmons University in golf, and he wants to be a minister. I hate to tell you that, Dennis, but anyhow.[1444.83][1444.83](Laughter). But anyhow, I appreciate what you've done and really hope that you try to back our park and our people that works there and come and use our park. Taxpayers of Glen Rose that pays for it, and for the town decided in Glen Rose, y'all really, really need to be proud. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[1470.48][1470.48](Applause). Rory?
Shirley Rory, 1019 Northeast Bernard, Oakdale Park, and I just wanted to say the same thing. Thank you to all of you for letting us work through your city. We have really enjoyed being here. We've met so many people, and it has been a wonderful experience. Thank Kelly a whole bunch for bringing us in in the first place, and she was wonderful, and we are so proud to be working with David. He has been awesome. I have never in my life had a supervisor who will back you like what he does, and I appreciate that so much. Again, we want to say thank you to all of you, and like Joe said, y'all, the park is wonderful. The taxpayers should be so proud of a small town like this. To have something like that, it is awesome. So, tell everybody you know, get everybody to come visit, and y'all come check it out and see what it's like. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.[1550.83][1550.83](Applause). Are there any other citizens in the audience who have any comments on non-agenda items? All right, at this point, we will move on to individual items for consideration. First item on the agenda is possible action regarding the appointment of four new preservation board members for the four expiring terms that expire this month. And since we have four council members present, what I'm going to do is each council member will be allowed to nominate one individual only of the applications that are worth for. That nomination will be seconded, and once seconded, we'll vote on the nomination. So, at this time, I would ask council members, having reviewed the applications in your packet, do you have any questions of any particular individual, or is there any of the applicants that you would like me to have come up to the podium? Yes, Councilwoman Ramsey?
I know the former ones, but I'd like to meet Ms. Peacock, and I know Ann McKinnney, and Carmen Lewis, so that I have faces with names to go with their applications.
Ms. Peacock, could you please come up to the podium? State your full name and your address.
My name is Linda Peacock, and I'm at 708 Northeast Bernard. We just moved here a few months ago from Grandberry, and I'm a retired teacher and ready to help volunteer and do whatever to improve Glen Rose.
Okay.
Thank you.
I do have one quick question for you. So, what prompted you to apply for the preservation board?
Well, I had someone encourage me that I really thought was someone who's beneficial to the city and could help me get on board and try to help and do whatever I can do.
Okay. Thank you. And the other one was Ms. Carmen Lewis? Is she in the audience this evening? Ms. Lewis? So...
Ann McKinnney?
All right, so, and you wanted Ann McKinnney up also? Ms. McKinnney? Is Ms. McKinnney in the audience? Any of the other council members have anyone that, yes, Councilman Jones?
I'd like the other tenants to stand up and have the same 30 seconds.
All, okay. Ms. Selby?
Yes.
Your current member of the board, could you please come up and say a, talk about yourself and your preservation board?
Okay, I'm Joyce Selby, 1122 County Road 311. I took over Sam Lundy's position when she was going to mayor, so I was the secretary for the last year. I have a computer that I put everything on computer, then I keep a hard copy of it. I've worked with the CDB, I've been with the CDB for 16 years and retired. I've been retired for one year, and I would like to be extended so that I could see some of the things that we stored on, please do.
And did any other particular questions for Ms. Selby? Okay, and she is currently a member of the preservation board. Ms. Kincaid, is Ms. Kincaid present? Okay, Ms. Kincaid is not present. Ms. Peacock is already seconded, Ms. McKinnney, Ms. Lewis, I believe, there's one other. Mr. Cosio? Luis Cosio, is he present? Luis Cosio, is he present? Okay, so of the candidates that have submitted applications.
Tom Osborne.
Mr. Osborne? Sorry, is it this? Okay, please.
What do you want me to do?
They want to see you. Come to the podium. Why you want to continue on the preservation board or whatever?
Well, I put it on my application. But anyways, I have Tom Osborne. I live at 811 South Bernard. Right, the south?
Yes.
All right. I was asked to go on the preservation board to just kind of give it a little bit of a balance. We've had some issues before years ago where the preservation board wasn't very aware of the landowner's side of it. And basically, that's why I'd like to stay on. Any questions?
Questions? Okay. Okay, so I will start with Councilwoman Ramsey.
We're going to draw numbers to see who we have.
There's, we have four seats. We have four council members. Each council member will get the opportunity for one nomination.
Okay. I have a lot of mixed emotions about, about the situation. Can I choose three?
No, you get, you get to nominate one. You get to vote on all four. You get to nominate one.
Okay. I'm going to nominate Tom Osborne. I was the one that talked to him on there first. I know that he's, has issues and about not always showing up to meetings unless reminded. But I do think he brings a history and balance to the preservation board. And so being the unique person I am, my recommendation is Tom Osborne.
Your nomination is Tom Osborne. Do I have a second for the nomination? Okay, Councilman Bryant, second for the nomination. Councilman Moore?
More for nomination?
Your nomination, please?
Joyce Selby.
Okay, do I have a second for the nomination?
A second.
Councilman Bryant? Your nomination?
I would like to welcome a new member. And since I only had one show out of the two, I believe that was Linda Peacock. Is that correct? I think her interest shows a lot of enthusiasm for Glen Rose, so I'd like to nominate her.
Okay, second for? And Councilman Jones?
Well, let me do Cynthia Kincaid. I've worked for her many years in Glen Rose and appreciate her a person of passion.
Do I have a second on Cynthia Kincaid? I'm Councilman Bryant.
Okay. This is the council vote. Those in favor of Tom Osborne for the preservation board, please just quickly raise your hands and I'll take a, just keep them up long enough. Okay, that is a 4-0. Joyce Selby, again, raise your hands. Okay. Linda Peacock, please raise your hands. Show of hands. And Cynthia Kincaid, show of hands. All right, then the new preservation board members are Tom Osborne, Joyce Selby, Linda Peacock, and Cynthia Kincaid. And City Secretary, if you need any of those nominations and seconds, I've got them written down. All right, and I want to thank all of the applicants who put in applications. And I encourage you, there every year, we do have members of the preservation board that need to be replaced. So do not hesitate to reapply. We welcome the citizens to these boards. They are volunteer boards, so the citizens are very important. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is item 6B. This is discussion of possible action regarding approval of ordinance number 583, which is an ordinance of the city of council. The city of Glen Rose establishing a speed limit of five miles per hour within the boundaries of Oakdale Park. It's also providing a penalty of a fine and not to exceed $200 for violation of this ordinance and providing for an effective date. This was discussed at the last council meeting. It was determined we did need to set a speed limit. And now this is the continuation of acting actually establishing so that the speed limit is enforceable within the county grounds. All right, any questions or discussion from council? Councilman Jones?
Is there a mechanism in place for Oakdale Park management to expel somebody from the park for speeding?
I don't believe that that is contained in the ordinance now.
Not with this ordinance. I'm just, in general, if somebody is speeding through the park and they residing there and they need to stop and they pick for speeding.
If someone is causing a difficulty in the park, police chief can issue a criminal trespass warning, and they would have to leave the park. And should they come back, then they will be subject to arrest and/or a ticket citation for their actions.
But that would pertain, pretty much, if I understand this correctly, Chief Morton, that would be an action that is any disorderly or disruptive type contact.
Sure.
But that, so it would be speeding, you know, continual speeding, et cetera. This would actually authorize the chief of police to issue a traffic citation for speeding.
I'm not opposed to ordinance having a violation. It's mostly luck being over there every time somebody's speeding, so, you know. And I don't know if Oakdale can actually report somebody speeding if you have that enforced.
No, it would be, it would be monitoring. But there, you know, there's going to need to be some communication if the park is having an issue with a particular individual or overall.
This ordinance, while it is an ordinance of the council and has effective law, fact of the matter is, it's a Class C misdemeanor. And for a Class C misdemeanor, for the chief to take any action, he has to actually see the violation. David could call him and say, yeah, somebody's speeding through the park. But if the chief doesn't see it, he can't write a ticket. And so the only thing that we really could do is give that individual is observe speeding through the park. And the chief could get there in time. He could issue him a ticket if he actually sees it. If not, we could have a criminal trespass warning issued to that individual not be able to come back into the park.
Councilwoman Ramsey, did you, you have a question? Was it, I know there was one other question.
Yeah, I'm going to keep my comments to myself tonight.
Are there any further questions from council? Yes, Councilwoman, did you?
Make them.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from citizens? At this time, do I have a motion to approve ordinance number 583? An ordinance of the city council of the city of Glen Rose establishing a speed limit of five miles an hour within the boundaries of Oakdale Park, providing a penalty of a fine not to exceed $200 for violation of this ordinance and providing for an effective date?
I'll make that motion, ma'am.
I have motion from Councilman Moore. Do I have a second? I have second from Councilman Jones. Councilman Jones, how about you? Councilman Bryant? Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ramsey?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion passes 4-0 in favor. Next item on the consent agenda is a presentation and some discussion and possible action regarding the garden club, a garden club request for the city to purchase new Christmas decorations from Elm Street Bridge crossing the Paloxi River in Glen Rose, Texas. Is Ms. Michael from the garden club here this evening? Yes. And if city ministry, or did you want to do a quick summary of this? Or do you, you know, okay. Ms. Michael, please go ahead and present your information.
Oh, okay.
If it goes into the council.
Well, I'm Amy Michael, and I'm representing Glen Rose Garden Club. We would like to see the Christmas decorations on the Paloxi Bridge downtown beat up from previous years. That bridge is such a charming part of the downtown area. And my husband and I moved here as permanent residents two years ago. And the downtown is such a standout that I'm sure, you're here a long time and you take for granted. It is, it is a wow factor. I mean, we've got that water tower up there. We've got the terrified wall. We've got the courthouse. And that bridge is so cool. And with the city lights, the way they are year round, I would love to see at Christmas time, those lights and those decorations bring everybody across the river to. I mean, it's just, it's just a natural flow. We've got Heritage Park over there. And I guess someday we could get ambitious and even bring it back at Christmas time too. So what we would love to do is, we are willing to do the work. We will, we will take care of it. We will be good stewards of it. We will install it every year. We would love the city to pay for it and to provide us with adequate secured storage for it year round and provide us with temporary electricity at the bridge on both sides for that one month. And our proposal is for commercial gray, just green, greenery that's got lights wrapped around it, swag it down there, put red bows at each swagger. And whole heart, whole heart offerings of forest on the square is going to underwrite all those bows. They're all weather, four inch wide, nice red velvet. They will last a long time, bows. All we're asking y'all to do is pay for lights and the guns. And I have, in my proposal, I have incandescent lighting and LED. And of course, LED is more, but it's, anyways. So that is our proposal. And I recognize that Christmas is a long time away. But if we can get funding now, we can take advantage of the June market. Christmas market is in June, and we will have opportunities through a connection with our president to get down to market and maybe save some money. So.
And for clarification, in discussing with you ahead of time and helping you to get this on the agenda, it's my understanding that the current decorations that the garden club has been using were from donations from citizens over the years. And they really are in very, you know, poor shape.
They are brown.
And so they are in desperate need of replacement. Okay, Councilwoman Ramsey, you have a question?
Yes, I'm excited about this project, so, but I have one question. When I was reading through each of the proposals, I mean, the things that you have on the garland itself, on the unlit garland, it doesn't talk about being an outdoor type. It talks about being in the home, a fireplace, and office. And I, my concern is, unless we are able to get a garland that is specifically made for outdoors, it's not going to hold up for the weather. If we're going to do it, let's do it right. Just based on this, there was nothing in there that, that talked about it being outdoors.
Uh, go ahead. I was going to say, do you have the, in the first paragraph of the product summary, it does say that it's a PVC material, the very last sentence of that. It's a PVC material suitable for both indoor and outdoor holiday decorating.
Right, but I just want to make, I want to make sure. Because when it's in the other descriptions, it talks about being indoors. So I just want to be, reiterate that we need to make sure that it's going to be not, we don't want to buy stuff because it's going to last. Because then we have to do it again.
It's a simple indoor annual holiday.
Right, but the stress and all the other things talks about indoor system. I'm not against buying this. I'm just stressing that I just want to make sure that this product is, or the product we're going to get is going to last and hold up.
I will certainly make that a part of the questioning if we get to that market that we are not interested in indoor because this will take a beating. It's, if it's outdoor, it's windy and.
I will, because I, because I agree with you. That makes, it's only the sensible language of it. And I'm not saying, again, please, council, understand, I'm not against this product. I'm just reiterating that we, if we're going to invest in it, let's make it a lasting investment for its long time, for a long time.
Councilman Bryant?
I'm definitely not against it either. It's, it's a thing of negative to such a good thought. But I think the last few years, the reason it hasn't been done, at least what I heard was because of vandals. They keep taking some of the decorations and throwing them in the river. Do you know anything about that? Is that, is that?
Well, that's why we stopped at the River Walk. Part of the problem with Heritage Park, I don't think there's ever been a problem with that on the bridge.
I like, I think it's a great idea. It's going to be prepared to something negative for the afternoon.
That is, that was a concern. And one of our committee members did talk to, uh, City policeman? Chief Martin? Oh, did St. Oldenburg talk to you about, do you, would we wire them or would we do zip ties and which was more secure?
Yes, ma'am, she did.
Okay, and you just basically said if they want it, they're going to take it. But our thinking is that on the bridge, it's on the street. You've got to stop traffic. You've got to pull over in the middle of the street if it's lit. So that, I don't know. I mean, it could happen.
Yeah, it's awful. We didn't know.
Councilman Jones?
On the, I'm in on the durability of the lights. There are lights. They're going to go back. And, you know, if you, they wear out in two or three years, I find, you know, it's in two or three years. So I'm not excited about that. And, you know, the comment on stuff getting stolen. My LED light that used to spread from my tree is still missing from last year.
Councilman Moore, did you have anything?
I think y'all did a great job taking care of the flowers. And I would recommend LED. And we've got an LED cross at the church. Been there for 16 years. Comes on three times a week. And it's old, old LED.
I think LED, that's what I, that would be our preference.
Our electric bills drop $40 a month when we're totally LED.
Any other questions or comments from council? City Minister, with respect to budget, did you have any information that you wanted to add?
Funds are available within budget to accomplish this. And I think it's a very worthwhile project.
So would those have to come out unfunded or would be?
No, it would be aligned out of budget.
Okay. At this time, any questions or comments for members of the audience? If you'd come to the podium, please. Amy, if you'd like to just kind of take a seat there just in case.
Celeste Schmidt, 1502 County Road 415, Glen Rose, Texas. I just really want to support this lady for doing a good thing because they took some of my flags, but I'm going to put more flags up tomorrow. And if we fall down to giving up something good, we'll never have anything good happen in Glen Rose. And I really just want to say, yay, she's on the same path I am. So, thank you.
Any other members of the audience? Okay, Ms. Michael, thank you very much for coming and doing this presentation.
Is this just going to be at Christmas? Did I?
It's just Christmas.
Just Christmas.
Yeah. There's a big agreement out there, you know, the light that rules you around with the same lights. That'll be another presentation.
But looking to the future, that really counts, okay? One step at a time. Okay, so council, we have two possibilities for lighting options. Is there a preference, is it regular or the LED?
Would it be for motion action reference?
Well, at this point, probably a motion. I just wanted to see, you know, because we do need to specify in the motion for, because of the price.
I'll make a motion to purchase the LED system.
Do I have a second for to approve? Okay, so I have a motion to put forward by Councilman Moore to. Okay, so a motion to put forward by Councilwoman Moore to approve purchase of the LED Christmas decoration package for the bridge as stated in the proposal. I have a second from, you have a question?
I have a question.
Okay.
Do they need a question on that, or are they just?
What would be your recommendation, City Administrator? Should we?
I believe, Ms. Mindle, these numbers were generated off of the documents that you provided, is that correct?
Yes, those were prices about two and a half or three weeks ago. There were some specials going on, but where there's one sale, there's another.
They're probably going to be pretty close, Councilwoman Jones, the market that they will be going to is, is going to be open to, to negotiation, so I would, I would say that these funds should be sufficient.
Okay.
Okay, so Councilwoman Martin has put forward a motion to approve.
Councilwoman Moore.
Or, I'm sorry, Moore, sorry, to approve the $2,493 requested for the LED decoration package that has been seconded by, I believe it was Councilwoman Ramsey?
Yes, Ramsey.
Okay. Okay. Councilwoman Jones?
Aye.
Councilwoman, or Councilwoman, who else?
Brian? Aye.
Councilwoman Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ramsey?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, that concludes our action agenda. We are moving on at this time to staff reports. Public Works.
Mayor, first I want to give y'all heads up, we've set a date for the city, County wide cleanup, it'll be 9/11, Saturday. In our same spot, we did it last year, back there on Commerce Street, behind Cherokee Road. It'll be from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and we'll be accepting electronics for, for recycle. That's free, with the exception of a couple items, TVs, there's going to be a charge on those, and any appliances that have freon still in them, there'll be a small fee on that as well. We'll have city staff members available to help unload or whatever we need to do, point people in the right direction.
Cut the real lines.
What's that?
Cut the real lines.
Yes.
What time is it?
That's from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Another, another project we're going to be starting on here in the next few weeks, we're going to be doing some smoke testing on our collections system. We're experiencing inflow every time we get a, a warning terrain, the plant does a lot of increase in the flow coming into the wastewater facility, so we'll, we'll be getting with the newspaper and making announcements, so there's no worries when they see smoke building out there, vents, or, you know, out on the ground without that happening. So, don't want anybody to be confused when they see that. As we test those lines and identify problems, we're going to use our GIS system to log that information, where we can tell, you know, when, when those were done last, and what problems have been addressed previously. The asphalt crack, still, we, we've been working on that a lot the last few weeks. Same thing with that, we're going to keep track on the GIS system, document the amount of material used, and where that material was used and the date, just to help us when we go into budget sessions, we can get an idea of how much material we're going to need for future streets. Nancy Drive, Jefferson Street, the, the survey that we did, we, we believe Greg Moody had sent out some letters to property owners that, that had fences or personal property on the alleyway that was identified. There's still some people that aren't in compliance with that, so I believe Stephanie's going to be working on sending out some more letters to follow up on that, to try to get that thing vacated where we can maintain that alleyway. And then, I wanted to fill y'all in, we had a group of students from high school today that went down to the wastewater plant to do, to, they were interested in, in the process of wastewater treatment, so Mr. Ogletree, who was the high school teacher there, coordinated with, with the administrators and, and made that happen, so that was kind of cool. And then lastly, I wanted to fill y'all in, Lance Powell is the operator that we hired almost a year ago, and he went and tested for his Class A water license, and he passed that, and so he's one of less than 100 AA licensed operators in the state of Texas. So, that's noteworthy there.
Yeah, Lance, congratulations.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Pretty impressive, and that sums it up for me. Thank you.
Well, of course, April was a very busy month, you can read the report on that. One of the big things I heard it talked about was the tribal fair that I went to in San Marcos, which was a Techstock travel tourism councilors association, and thanks to God of the Lord Valley, I was able to take a bunch of fossils down there, and we had our, our stand-up sign, I had little giveaways, and I also had one copy that I had to make a sample copy of the magazine. And through that one copy of the magazine, I was able to get over 3,000 orders from magazines to go out all over Texas to all the Texas travel tourism stops, as well as all of the Texas Department of Wildlife and a few other CVBs. The magazines just came in last Friday afternoon. Today I've delivered to Granbury, Clever, Heiko, and several other businesses, but they are in the office, if anyone's interested in getting them. For those of you who are here, here tonight, there's some up, up front on the counter out there, if you're interested, but this is the new magazine. Everyone who's seen it has been extremely impressed with the professionalism of it and the information that's in it. At this point, we're probably going to have to do another run, probably in the fall, because many people that are requesting the magazine, so that's a great thing. And I just wanted to remind everyone that the, our CVB group social is at the Expo Center tomorrow evening from 6:00 to 8:00. So if you've not seen all of the expo and what all they have to offer, please come and join us. Mary's Turning Farm will be doing hors d'oeuvres, and they'll be having a barrel race, and we'll be getting a, a great tour, so that's all I have to report. Anyone have a question?
So is this going to be a twice-year magazine?
Well, it wasn't intended to be, and I actually thought it would be a two-year magazine, but after getting over 3,000 orders, it's the only travel fair I've been to yet, not counting any other CVBs or anything like that. I have also talked to Granbury and Clever CVBs, and we are all probably pitching in to set up a booth at TML for Tri-County, and be advertising Glen Rose, Granbury and Clever, and so that'll also be a, a big event for us, so, yes, it looks as if we will have to do another run, because we will probably be running out of the magazine. However, we will be selling more ads, so for those people who are just seeing it and didn't take advantage of it the first time around, when I was in Clever today, I did get to meet the president of the new Clever Railroaders, and they are interested in putting in a full-page ad in the magazine to promote the minor league baseball team that will be near us as well, so it's going well.
We know we worked hard on it, so we appreciate it.
Well, I think it's an awesome magazine, so.
Yes, it is. Any questions? Any other questions, comments? Okay, Oakdale Park.
Y'all have a copy of my monthly report.
I think so.
April was a dirt-filled month over there, with a lot of dirt, got a lot of things done. The update on the reallocation money that you guys did for me in March, code enforcement report came in a thousand dollars under budget, so we're good with that.
Questions with City Councilwoman Moore? Yes, Councilwoman Ramsey?
Uh, yes. All of the, I have a question regarding the bluegrass spreadsheet, under expenses and the income. I guess my question is, what line item did all the expenses come out of, and what line item did all the income that related to that? Were they a wash within each one, or?
The expenses came out of the admin line.
And where did the income go?
Income will go back into the, I don't know that it's actually recorded there right now on his spreadsheet, but it will go back in, into the Oakdale fund.
Not into the event budget?
Yes.
Okay, you said Oakdale fund, I'm sorry, I, I just, because I, I pulled the actual copies of the budget of where line it was supposed to be, and I guess one of my biggest concerns is, and I, I'm going to address, just address it to both of you, is that we took out $400 for Buck's salary to be down there, and since Oakdale is city property, and I'm wondering, you know, if we're taking that out, are we taking out his time when he's in the city hall, the city council meeting, out of administration to replace that? To me, Oakdale is, I know he left and went and came and went, and so I, I have a problem with that, and also from an accounting standpoint, when you buy something like purchasing the buttons, you've already written those off, okay? And so the income comes in, and the fact that we, I guess, the buttons were charged off for the volunteers, including the, at retail price, and that's not something in proper accounting that you would take out of what you lost, because you don't know how many people that you gave off, like volunteers, council members, city administrators, that we got buttons that were not charged. You don't know the exact amount that you would have lost if you had not given them to volunteers. So I, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding why you would charge the full retail of the button out of expense for the volunteers, or for the council, I mean.
I think strictly from an accounting standpoint, since they are identified as a loss per se, you have to record them at their full value in that regard. And you're right, you don't know how much, how many of those buttons were actually used, how many would not have been used had they not been received, but since they are, since they were accounted for as being provided to the volunteers and to the city council and other workers, they have to be recorded at their full value, and that was, that was appropriate.
So basically, what Oakdale, I mean, I don't see any new policies on it, these are policies, I mean, these are things that just happen to happen.
That's just in county practice.
I guess I'm in the wrong county practice then, from, from that point, but as long as the expenses are taken out of the event part, and the income is put in the event part to compensate for that.
Well, in the budgeting, in the budgeting process, once, once an expense is recorded, the revenue for that expense does not go back into the expense account, it stays over to revenue side.
Well, but it's making, it's reducing the event budget for things, for example, like, like food and stuff.
Absolutely, the expense budget is reduced.
But when we have line items for overtime, for, my little dookie, for overtime for these type of things, the snack bar supplies, which automatically includes the concession stand based on the fact that it's there, that I don't understand why those things are being taken out of the event budget when Oakdale is the venue for, unless we want to just have events, you know, events somewhere else, so that Oakdale's not charging at all.
I guess my question there would be, what, what are we charging to the event? Are we only charging the cost of the band, are we charging, what are we charging to the event? Are we not charging all?
The direct cost of the event, but not the food, because that's.
That's a direct cost of the event. If it weren't, if the event wasn't going on, you wouldn't have the food costs, right?
Well, I, I'm not going to argue, I'm just going to keep my opinion.
Councilwoman Brand?
I have a question, and I did not see this on line item until Councilwoman Ramsey had mentioned it. You know, here's my last meeting, so I don't have much input I'm going to have here, but on the police department cover, being it's a salaried position, I could probably understand if it was, if Chief Martin wasn't available, we had to hire security, but as far as him being a salaried position, I mean, wouldn't that just stay, well, we'll take him out of the event.
Normally that would, normally you would not do that, this is a special events-type situation where he was asked to come back on the weekend, and he worked both Saturday and Sunday at the event. Obviously, there's, that particular crowd is not a very rowdy crowd, but it does require having some security out there for, for that purpose. It's just a, it's just a management call of the deal as to whether or not you call Buck in, or you make him come in as just strictly as a salaried employee, and he puts in the necessary hours. It, it, you can do it anyway. How about this, Councilman, first?
My last comment to this would be, you know, I know we, some of these events struggle, I think the point is, the hope is to keep all these events alive, you know, at Oakdale Park, I mean, that's just been so, so huge for Glen Rose. I'm looking at the income expenses, obviously, that's, we've generated a little bit more than, than our expenses, so that's, that's a good thing, but, I mean, corners we can cut as far as keeping stuff out of the expense line for those events, I think, you know, if we just manage those really well. I mean, I, I mean, next council will make that decision, but the hope is to keep these events alive.
Okay. Ms. Charmin, do you have anything more with respect to your report that you need to bring forward? Any other questions for Parks and Forest? Moving on then to Police Department.
Mayor, Council, I figured that my monthly report's along with item control, I don't have any questions, I don't have anything to add.
Any questions from councilmembers? Okay, I don't have a question, however, I do want to pass on to Council. I don't know whether any of you have been noticed coming into the city, that we now have our speed limit signs, those speed limit drops that are now ordered in red. We owe a great deal of thanks and initiative to our police chief, who took it upon himself after a discussion to contact Techstock and find out what needed to be done to get that to, in place, and he did what needed to be done, and voila. So thank you very much.
It's been a lot.
And it does, it gives people a heads up, they got to use this now, okay? Animal control, any questions on the animal control report? Code enforcement?
Well, I guess first, we have a new building official, so Chester, did you want to introduce him before?
Tom, what's your? Tom P. Tom's hardly working on day two. He's spent the last week and one day getting oriented, and Stephanie's been taking him around and giving him a tour and indoctrination through what's going on in, in the city, and several problem areas that we're having to deal with, so Tom's getting, getting acclimated, and if you have any questions or opportunity, come by and visit with him. Anxious to help out wherever.
Tom, did you answer?
Welcome aboard. Good job living here, this is very enjoyable. I've done this quite a while, and a small, clean, fun-loving town like this is just a joy to work in and with you people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Okay, any questions from Council regarding the, this code enforcement report? Moving on, the fuel, this is the new report, City Secretary? So this is from the new company? It's really nice, you can actually figure things out very quickly, and the check register?
Put it all back. If you need more, please give me. This is, this is great, so if you ever need.
Any questions for these? Any questions for the city secretary?
I'd like to thank her for handling the election.
I was going right there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Going right there, okay? I would like to commend our city secretary. It is a huge, huge responsibility to the soldiers of the city secretary for the conduct of the elections. And there is a lot that goes into that and behind it and it must be very precise. And Christie, you did an outstanding, wonderfully smooth job. Thank you very much. And Mr. Dolan, anything else from city administration?
I think we've just about covered everything. We, we do have one other item. We were notified last week indirectly from the state that we will be receiving a community development block grant funding for water and sewer improvements. An amount of $250,000 the city will have to match 10% of that. So the total project cost will be 275. We'll get formal notification of that probably within the next 45 to 60 days. Not sure when we will crank off the project or even which particular area we will be doing it. But Jim will be identifying a watering or sewer project for the council's approval and move forward from there.
Thank you for the email too to notify us. That's great.
All right. All right, there being no further business before the council. The meeting is adjourned at 6:41.